Brett, are you ready?
Yep.
So then we call the council, Gibson Council Board Session on one dash zero nine order. Brett, what call please.
Hope.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Ready.
Here.
Temple.
Here.
Have a quorum. Is that better? Still haven't gotten used to our new digs. We have three agenda items on the work session agenda this evening, the first one being a discussion of the bridge bank stabilization and trail relocation project in Beaver Creek Natural Resource Area. It looks like John is going to present to us on that.
All right, I think this is on. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Kind of sound silly right now to talk about issues that we've had with flooding based on the last couple of years of not having any water. But we have Ava and Blair with both that is going to talk a little bit about stabilization project as well as a trail relocation that's really based on Beaver Creek over the last five to 10 years, having issues flooding, coming out of its banks and eroding areas around the bridge and around the trail system area. So with that, I will turn it over to Blair and Ava and let them go.
All right. Hi, my name is Blair Spotts and I have Eva here with me too. And I just want to give a brief overview about the proposed stabilization project. So this project has two main components. The first component is relocating two trail sections along Beaver Creek. The trail segments are currently on top of eroding banks and are in danger of destabilizing and falling into the creek. So we're proposing to relocate those trails to a location that is stable and safer for pedestrians and will reduce maintenance for the city. The second component is to stabilize the bank where the existing trail bridge is located. Currently, the banks are eroding and are threatening the structural integrity of the bridge abutments. There's been some past repairs done, but unfortunately, those have not been affected, effective. So we are proposing new stabilization all around the bridge abutments, but also further upstream to provide additional protection. And this project has already been approved by the Army Corps and the ENR. So this photo shows an overall view of what the proposed project plan is. We have three sites that this project was broken down into. We have Site One, Site Two, and Site Three. Site One and Two are the two trail relocation areas. Site One will be relocated to follow the top of berm of the existing Oxbow. And this Oxbow was installed in approximately 2019, I believe. And then Site Two will just slightly push the new alignment about 10 to 35 feet north of where the existing trail is. And then the trail that is shown between Site One and Two will be removed. And then Site Three is up along the existing bridge, and that will just be some revetment and stabilization materials that we will put in place. The blue line that you see is the proposed haul route that the contractor will use to access the site. They'll access the site from Pioneer Parkway and South Drive. We have worked with Cortiva on this route and they are good to go. They are happy with the project, happy with the route. We're just waiting for an official sign off on the documents for that. So this photo shows the existing trail loop, so highlighted in green. So this is what the trail is today. You can see the green line as it gets close to Beaver Creek. We're getting really close to being in the creek, so that is why we are relocating it to a safer location. And then this photo, to give you an idea, in pink is what the proposed trail loop will be. So you see Site One extending further away from the creek, around the Oxbow, and then Site Two just shifting slightly north. And then the bridge will stay exactly as it is. So this shows is zoomed in picture of Site One. As I stated, it will follow the berm of the Oxbow that was installed in 2019. Because this has all just been recently graded, fortunately, tree removals for this site will be fairly minimal. There are some trees that will still need to come down, but fortunately, most of those are ash trees. Site Two, this area will be shifting about 10 to 35 feet north of the existing alignment, with that 35 feet being closer to the proposed culvert to allow for proper drainage, drainage swale that is coming down from the north. This area will require more tree removals, just due to the nature of where the alignment needs to go. But again, fortunately, these are mostly ash trees that needed to come out anyway. And then lastly, the third site will consist of rock revetment around the bridge abutments to really protect and harden in that bank to protect the bridge from any future erosion. But then we will also do stabilization measures about 300 feet further upstream. And we're proposing longitudinal peak stone toe production. If you're not familiar with that type of protection, almost identical protection was installed just a little bit further upstream on the opposite side of the creek in about 2017, I believe. So that's all I had, just a quick little presentation. But if you have any questions, comments, concerns, happy to answer them now.
Hey there. Quick question. You said there'll be removing some trees and you said some ash trees. What other trees are being removed up there?
The alignment, especially for Site One from that area, it's pretty heavily wooded. And we picked the alignment so that it would avoid the removal of any of the larger trees. So there's really minimal large tree removal through Site One. Again, Site Two was mostly smaller scrub trees and the mature trees were ash trees. When we did our Army Corps of Engineers permit, the Corps determined that there was no endangered species habitat that would be affected by the removal of those trees.
Okay, thank you.
Site One, almost exclusively ash along that area. What few were not ash were actually thorny locusts and really nasty looking thorny locusts that didn't belong there. I will mention, one of the reasons Site One was moved so far away from the creek, it's actually twofold. One was to take a path that was already disturbed. It was purposeful. We knew that we would have minimal tree loss because we were taking the pathway that was really created by making the Oxbow. And to a lesser degree even, they used this area when they put in the electric lines for Mid-American. That's the first part. The second part was, we just put an Oxbow in that was away from the trail system and we really weren't given recognition or educational opportunities what the importance of Oxbow. So the other component is really wanting to bring that trail, so people were forced to walk by the Oxbow and see the full effect of what the Oxbow was doing. So it was kind of twofold for bringing that Site One trail out away as far as we did. The two areas, not as much Site Two, but the area for Site One that we removed the trail, we're going to maintain that as a trail. Once it's removed, it will just be a soft trail. So we'll mow that section. And that way, if Beaver Creek decides to take over that area, we aren't losing an actual trail. We're just an area that has been mowed for the last couple of years, so.
John, I've got some questions, and they're kind of all over the place. One, someone
Sorry to interrupt you, I can't hear very well.
I don't hear you picking up on the microphone.
Yeah, the microphone's on.
Try again. You're switched off now.
John, I had some pictures emailed to me this morning. I sent them on to you and Matt. Is there some trail work near the Merle Hay Road where there's some temporary trail gravel?
Over by where Ignite will be going?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we had an area that had washed out in the 2018 flood that we knew the Ignite project was going to address where that trail is. So we put in some rock to, as a temporary solution until this project moved forward, so.
Okay. So I'll let them know that it's going to be taken care of in the next.
Correct. Yes, with the Ignite project, that whole trail system in that area will be addressed.
And then my other question is, since we're doing so much work, we're doing a lot of work on Beaver Creek, and it's because we have this wonderful gem of a recreation opportunity. And I'm a little concerned about excessive rip rap, taking away from the feeling that you're on a native stream. So are you concerned with any of that?
I think if, as we look at the large scale stabilization of the banks along Beaver Creek, and I think, Matt, I think that's one of the things that you were starting to work with both a little bit on, wasn't it, Morva?
Yeah, I mean, that was Beaver Creek, just mainly those stabilization things.
Yeah.
Where you're starting to eat into people's backyard, particularly if you look for the stabilization part, I don't know if you've done a project. I generally, if you have city infrastructure that is being affected or property that is being affected, folks will be impacted.
So as we look at the holistic approach, we'll probably start looking at areas that it's more of a natural type solution instead of rock. But where we have to put the armoring is around these key, like the bridges and those types of areas. It needs to be armored so that the water doesn't erode away the foundation of the bridge.
Absolutely understand about the armoring, but I think that there's some overlay, I mean, you can do the armoring of the slopes and then perhaps there can be come back in with a shallower layer of maybe some sort of rock or engineered design. And I'm not a river engineer, but I know that there's ways that they can make slight changes with the current. So perhaps you could get some native grasses to grow along the bank, just to make it look not so much like a manufactured.
And we will be starting that with the Conservation Corps. This year is the first year, we don't actually have to hire the Conservation Corps to remove the log jams and stuff, because we haven't had water since the last time we had that. What they're going to start doing, they're going to come up with a plan in some of these key areas, is where they start removing log jams, they'll actually use the logs themselves to come in and stabilize the shorelines there and then bring the soils. And so it's a much more natural approach to those types of areas.
Okay, I really appreciate that you already had that on your.
It's, yeah, they don't have the full development plan. We haven't got anything to share at this point, but that's one of the things that we had conversations last year about was, in some of these key areas that are eroding where log jams are present, can we use those log jams to benefit? And there are different rivers really across the country that, that's how they stabilize certain areas, is utilizing these logs as components to it, so.
Great, thank you.
And Councilmember Martin, just to add, some of the projects that we've done prior with the tiebacks, they do leave the area low behind those. And then when the creek rises, it does silt in behind those and then cover that rock up. And it really protects the toe from eroding. So it does get back to a natural state after a while.
Yes.
You're starting to see a little bit of that even on 62nd, that the armoring of near 62nd. Even those rocks are starting to slowly but surely get enveloped with the shoreline. So they're not nearly as obvious anymore.
I've got a couple of questions about, so as we look at Site One there, the trail goes sort of south and west past Site One, and it stays quite, very close to Beaver Creek. So what has it been determined that that section of the trail doesn't need to be moved, that there's not erosion issues?
It's not nearly, I mean, it's probably, and Ava, Blair, you might be able to tell exactly, it's probably 20, 25 feet at least away from the creek. The section between there, you can barely see the line where the trail exists. We have areas of trail that's been removed, that we had to remove and.
Basically, I just want to make sure.
It's not in danger.
Okay, so that, so that area, that, because that, to me, as much of that trail that we're able to maintain is as close of a relationship to the creek, I think is really important, because I think that's an important part of the, of the appeal of it, is you get not only the trees, but also the closeness to the creek. And so the fact that, that sort of that Site Two remains still relatively close to the creek, and then the area south of Site One stays in close relationship to the creek, too, I think is really important. And so your sense is, is that that's not an area that's.
It's not in immediate danger.
Maybe, okay.
Beaver Creek is a meandering creek, which means it's going to continue moving. We're not going to control that. Eventually, that section may be in trouble, but at this point it's not immediate. And in Site Two, really, there's, there's almost a natural levee there from the floods, and that's part of what they're, that we're utilizing for it. So it's, it's just a couple of feet higher than where the actual trail is now.
Still be able to see the creek.
Yes, you're not moving it that.
Massive sandbars in that area.
Correct.
And just can you remind us to kind of where, where the funding is for this project as far as an RCIP?
Yeah, and about, I think it was 2019, 20, we had a project that we were going to completely move the bridge and replace the bridge. We decided this was a better answer, because the cost just to move the bridge out of there was going to be extremely high. So we're tackling both of these components. There's also funds from FEMA, because the bridge was damaged, or the footings were damaged in the flood of 2018. So there's those two components that are funding this project.
So what's the rough timetable? Like, when do you expect to go to bid, or?
Well, we're hoping at this council meeting, we're, we have an agenda item for ordering construction.
Okay.
And that would put, yep, that would put the bid opening, I believe, is that May 18th? You remember, Blair?
Yeah, May 18th, and then award on June 7th.
So.
Okay.
This is a project that we're hoping will be complete by the end of the fall.
Okay, great, great. Thank you.
Are you planning to do any kind of public information around it so that, you know, people who use the trails know it's coming and?
I think we need to, yeah, yeah. That way, and we've been talking different options of how can we keep the entire trail system open through the entire period. It's kind of a juggling act a little bit.
Yeah, it's a heavily used trail.
Yeah, so we're continuing to talk. But yes, I think that would be a good idea to have a full public meeting on it.
I'm sorry, I had one just last question. So the section of the trail that's going to be in essence abandoned, will you tear the concrete out and then it'll remain, but it'll be there as a soft trail? Is that the plan?
Correct.
Or asphalt or whatever it is? Okay.
The balancing act that I talked about is, we can keep that section of trail in as we build Site One, and you have continuity. The downside is, we've talked a lot about using that asphalt as a subbase for. And that way, we're reusing the trail system. If you do that, then you don't have a trail system through there. So that's the balancing act. And I think that's where the public meeting can come in place of which one's more important, reusing what's out there and closing the trail, or trying to keep the trail closed, or trying to keep the trail opened up as much as we can.
Or at least closing a segment of it or something, yeah, because you.
And we can, and we can close sections of it and put gravel down. That's, I mean, crushed limestone is a good substitute in these areas. Certainly not perfect, but short term, it can work.
Any other questions on this agenda item?
Thank you.
On to item 3B, update on the zoning and subdivision update RFP process. David? Thanks, Blair and Eva.
Good evening. I wanted to provide an update on our RFP process in our search for a consultant for our zoning and subdivision regulation update. We put out an RFP soliciting proposals from interested consulting firms and received five proposals back. I want to thank Councilmen, Councilmembers Evans and Temple, who assisted with reviewing those proposals, as well as Planning and Zoning Commissioners Lindsey Kenworthy and Neil Shaw. Spent a significant amount of time reviewing those five. Ultimately, we selected three firms to interview. Hoyzington Cogler Group out of Minneapolis, Housia Levine out of the Chicago area and Confluence, and a couple of partners here out of Des Moines. After interviews were conducted last Wednesday, the committee came to a unanimous consensus to move forward with negotiations with Hoyzington Cogler Group. They should sound familiar to you. They are a consultant that we worked with on our, on our comp plan. And they really brought forth a great proposal, a great interview, and really understood the process that the city is hoping to go through, understand sort of the issues that we have, and offered a significant amount of tools and ways we can get through that process. So that's the committee recommendation. Their RFP response had a proposed budget of about $145,000. It actually included about $12,000 of contingency, knowing that we're going to encounter things that we want to do, or more public engagement, that we want to do something throughout the process. And so that actually falls under our budgeted amount that we had originally anticipated for the project. We did budget in the current fiscal year and in this coming fiscal year, the total for the project, because we, of COVID and the delay that we had with adopting the comp plan, we'll need to move some of those unspent funds in this fiscal year into the next fiscal year, but they're all budgeted and accounted for. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, I want to really thank Jim and John and Lindsey and Neil, who spent a significant amount of time and would invite if they had any comments that they took away from the interviews as well.
Any comments or questions for David?
I would just comment for the council members' information. I don't think the decision was really close between one and two. I think they were clearly the strongest candidate.
It was unanimous and a very quick decision. And I don't think we went into it that way at all. There was two proposals that really, really stood out. I think we interviewed the third, and it was pretty clear through the interview that they really stood out.
I'm, I'm very happy that we're moving forward with this. This is fabulous. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? We'll move to Agenda Item C, discuss upcoming repainting of the Johnson Water Towers located on Northwest 100th Street and Northwest Beaver Drive, 78th Avenue.
Good evening, Mayor and councils. I just wanted to provide a quick update. We do have, in our upcoming CIP, two of our water towers to be repainted this year. Those two towers are located on 100th, and then the other, the third tower would be, or the second tower is located up on Northwest Beaver Drive and 78th Avenue. What you can see in the photo here is our, is our newest water tower that's located out on 107th. We're looking to coordinate all of our water towers so that they look like our newest tower, which is, it's a tan with the Johnston Script logo on it in purple. What we would like to do is, on the 100th Street Water Tower, you can go to that next slide, thank you. It currently has a logo on it, so we'd like to maintain the logo on it as well. And then the one at Beaver Drive and Northwest 78th, we'd like to propose adding a logo to that ground storage tank. And here is the water tower that's currently on 100th Street that is currently blue with black Johnston Script. We would repaint this with the, with the tan color and leave the Johnston Script, but it would be in purple. As you can see here on the map, it's currently located just up in the upper, there you go, in the upper right-hand or left-hand corner. That'll be right in front of where we reconstruct here in a few years. But currently, what you don't see in the picture, too, is there, there's a fence that's constructed around here so that you can't see the base of it for security purposes. But this one is currently scheduled, like I said, in this coming CIP, and it's roughly around a $330,000 project to repaint that tower. This is the storage tank. It's up on Northwest Beaver Drive. It's kind of diagonal from the tank park right there across from Camp Dodge. As you can see in the photo, there's actually two towers up there, or two ground storage units. The one in the background, the smaller one, is Camp Dodge's facility. The larger one that's in the forefront of the picture is the Johnston Tower, and we would repaint this one also, that tan color, and propose to add the logo there just to the right of the ladder, so that as you're driving up Beaver Drive, we would have the Johnston logo on that as well. This project, we've currently got it slated in the CIP as well, and it's roughly around that $450,000 price range. And to add the logo is roughly about $5,000, $7,500 bucks to add the logo to this tank. But that would just be a nice feature, is it sits on top of that hill across from Camp Dodge and the tank park. That is all I have to share on that. Be happy to answer any questions.
Matt, we've had an issue in the past, and it's been some time, where the logo lettering wasn't large enough that it was really very effective. Are we making sure that it is painted large enough that it can be seen?
Yes, we plan to mimic what is out on our 107th Street Water Tower. I believe that was the tower where we had the small lettering and had to increase that. So, yeah, we will do that.
So do we know what timetable Camp Dodge has for repainting theirs? Do we know if they have any plans to repaint their tower? It would be nice if they would, you know, complement each other.
We can reach out to Camp Dodge. We haven't had that communication yet, but we can reach out to those folks. Jim, right now?
Good idea, just let them know that we're doing ours and see what their plans are for theirs. Other questions for Matt?
Yes, the only thing I had is, I'm obviously in the minority here, but I prefer the blue. But I, you know, the tan, the tan looks like urban to me, but, and I always liked the blue tower out there, but anyway.
I had another resident whose last name was Temple, who preferred the tan.
I'd hear them.
I can't remember us actually ever discussing that.
I don't really remember discussing the tan one, but maybe I wasn't on the council then. I don't remember.
A while ago. I just remember the comment, "I'm just glad it's not that god awful blue." No, and I used to say, I used to share that view. I used to think that, you know, the blue was better because it would fade into the horizon. But actually, you know, I've, over time, I've kind of decided that the beige actually, you know, we have snowstorms, we have rainstorms, the beige actually kind of blends better into the background than the blue. But anyway.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, well, I think that completes our work session items. So Jim, do we have anything under the council, the staff comments that we should cover?
We don't have anything listed under the staff comments. I do want to mention that we are planning to have our, the mayor's bike ride on May 15, and that begins at 11:30. And that'll be also the day that we will do the unveiling of the new art piece. of the new art piece up down, not new art, our new art piece, new art piece, it's been around for a while, but that'll happen on that date as well.
Would be installed by then?
Yes. Actually, he's been cleaned up, you know, from getting some of the, getting cleaned up a little bit. We had a professional artist take care of that, and then they're doing some repairs on some places on the sculpture, and that's being done this week. So, anticipate it getting up, getting installed early next week.
So, we'll actually start the, the bike ride at, at the sculpture.
Yes.
We'll do the unveiling, and then we'll start the bike ride at the sculpture, and we'll end at Terra Park. And Hy-Vee is, is, we've made arrangements with Hy-Vee to provide lunch.
Terra Park that's provided by Hy-Vee, and people can come, it'd be a 75 beautiful, 75 very beautiful.
There we go. Another one.
So, they'll get their food, and they can spread out in the park if they want.
Yeah. And it'll be on a Saturday this year, so we, we anticipate a lot more kids and families participating than we've had in the past.
The only high-traffic area that people will be crossing is through the Johnston Drive. The rest of the trail goes under Merle Hay, right, right off the shelter.
And we'll have people stationed at different locations to give direction and provide protection. Okay. Anything else, Jim?
Just, I, I sent the council an email last week about the fact that we're on the top 10 list for possible funding for, on the Representative Axnes's list for the Beaver Creek, or the Beaver, the sanitary sewer extension up towards the northwest area. So, we're on the top 10 list. I'm assuming there's a lot of people, I don't know how many, you know, applications she received, but I'm sure there's a lot of people, because there's a lot of representatives in Congress, will, you know, so it'll be, it'll be a competitive thing. They got ahold of us last week and wanted some additional information, and we were able to provide that, because they're now taking it to the, the committee that recommends the funding, so. But I want to thank staff, a lot of hard work on that, getting that application together. We did hire a firm to help us put the, the actual grant together, grant application, but certainly a lot of work from David and Matt and Teresa and, and others involved, and Adam, you know, with that project, and, and providing the additional information that was requested last week. So, I guess it's just a waiting game now to see if, once they get their selection, which projects would be approved. It's about, they, they said the average grant's probably going to be about $1 million, so it is pretty significant, if we can get some funding to help with the construction of that sanitary sewer.
Have any sense of when they might make a decision, Jim?
Well, the funding, the money has to be spent in FY '22, but I think that's the, the federal, which begins October 1 versus ours begins July 1, so it'll probably, so I'm sure they'll have to have the, the recommendations hopefully before, they didn't say exactly what timeframe, but I know they're, we're getting ready last week for, to go to whoever does the final review of the proposed projects.
Anything else?
We have one other quick update. We did receive word today from the Iowa DOT for some RISE grant funding for the Merle Hay Road and Johnston Drive intersection. I think we asked for slightly over $4 million. They came back after they worked through their formula, and we received about 26% of that ass, so slightly just under $1.1 million was awarded, or will be going to the committee for recommendation. That happens on May 11th, so I'm looking forward. That was good news this morning, so I wanted to thank, as Adam Plaguey was tremendous help in this, as well as both, and then the folks at Ignite, Brian and Chad as well. So, it's good news for the intersection project. Thank you.
Well, we have a few minutes to fill. Why don't we, we'll do the, the quick round of city council comments. Councilman Evans, do you have anything to share with us this evening?
Nothing.
Okay. Councilman Gold?
I'll pass.
Councilman Temple?
Pass.
I, I do not have anything. Well, I want to thank everyone that was involved in Kites on the Green this past weekend. We couldn't have had a much nicer day. It was a little, a little gusty at times.
A little hot.
Well, no, 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 no. No, it was a beautiful, beautiful day, and, and, you know, I, I think that, you know, if it's, if you have to have your choice between no wind and maybe a little too much wind, I think we prefer the too much wind, because the fact is, you know, we had an incredible turnout. You know, it was scheduled from 10 to 5. I would say from 10 to noon, there were so many kites in the air that we could not have had one more up there. I mean, it was just that the, yeah, it was amazing. And in fact, you know, we weren't able to get many of the larger kites up because it was so windy, and, you know, what they do is they capture, capture the air as it's going through, and they were concerned that it would split their seams. But there was one ladybug up in the air that crossed another larger kite, and, and they cut the strings, cut each other's strings, and the ladybug ended up in a tree somewhere, and.
We rescued her.
And how was she?
She didn't get saved.
Oh, good. I was a little concerned, because, yeah, I mean, what was really exciting about the, the Kites on the Green this year is, most kite festivals across the country still have not organized and are not having events this year. So, we had professional kite flyers that were looking for places to fly their kites, and we had professional kite flyers from other, other states that wanted to come here and, and fly their kites. So, we, we did see kites that we'd never seen before, and the ladybug was one of them, and it was a gentleman from Ohio who, who had brought the ladybug here, and, and, you know, it was unfortunate that she got away and got caught up in a tree, but, but the Parks Department rescued her this morning and, and sent her back home again, so. But it was, it was an incredible event. A lot of people there that have never been there before, and, you know, the staff, Parks Department, Communications, and everyone else that was involved in it, the police and the fire, everyone that was involved in it, just did an out, library, everyone did an outstanding job, and everybody enjoyed themselves. And, you know, there were some things that we didn't do this year because of COVID. We didn't have food trucks, we didn't have water for sale, but I think most people understood that, and, and they worked around it, and it was just a, a successful day, all day long. People were just coming and going, so. I'll bet we had between 2,000 and 3,000 people there throughout the day, so. Thanks to everyone who made that a great event.
One thing I'd like to add, I was helping some folks with building the kites, and what amazed me is this, none of them were from Johnston. This is becoming a real regional event. A lot of Johnston people, obviously, but, I mean, there were people from Dallas Center and Des Moines and, and other places, as I talked to them, helping, you know, with the kites and everything, and it was, it was pretty impressive. It's a, a real regional thing now, and putting us on the map for, for a very good event.
I mean, literally, there were times when the entire library, the entire parking lot was full, and they were, they were parking up and down the street, so.
I'm happy that Jim got a silver quarter. I hear you've been working out pretty hard on those.
Yeah.
So, our next, next family fun event will be the, the bike ride, and we have good weather promised for that, so we should have a great turnout.
It's 75 and 70.
There we go. Well, I guess with that, we will adjourn the work session, and we'll come back in just a few minutes for the regular council meeting. And I think that one will move right along this evening as well.